Good morning. Want to get started? To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Minister Carvin Ha- Higgins, Higgins, I'm sorry, Higgins, I shouldn't, I should be able to, I'm sorry, sir, of Southern Baptist Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilman David O. I would ask all guests, visitors, and members to please rise.
Good morning.
Morning.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come this morning, Lord, thanking you for all things, Lord. Right now, Lord, we ask you to watch over the city council, Lord, allow their decisions to be concise, Lord, allow them to be precise, Lord, allow them to be for the people over profit, for we know with people there come profit, Lord. We ask you just to guide the hearts and minds of our council president, our council members, guide the hearts and minds of our mayor, Lord. We ask you to look over our first responders, Lord, find a way to find respect between them and the public, Lord, them giving and receiving, as well as the public the same, Lord. We ask you, as you're developing our city and it's thriving, Lord, we ask you to develop the people which are in those communities, Lord, allow them to be grown like trees instead of pick-pluck like weeds, Lord. We ask you, Lord, that you just elevate this whole inspiration, Lord. We ask you to move each person that's in this room right now to let our tongues be guided and our thoughts be moved in your way and your will, Lord, and all these things we pray in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor, appreciate. Council, be at ease. Thank you very much, and again, Minister, thank you for those inspiring words. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 21st, 2019, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 21st, 2018 be approved.
Thank you, it is moving properly second, that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 21st, 2019 stand approved. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with our regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their day to come down to witness their government in action. We hope that your day is a knowledgeable one, but even more so, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. So again, thank you for being here today. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman David O., who presented resolution recognizing the winners of the PHL Live Center Stage. With David Ivory and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium. And also joining Councilman O., we have Councilman O'Neal, Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blondo Reynolds Brown.
All right, so I'll ask the following people and all those involved with PHL Live Center Stage to come forward. If you are a winner, would you please stand in front? So that will be Chil Moody, Justin Nordele, Philadelphia Folk Song Society, Thomas Carmada, Jazz It Up Philly, Louis Scallion, President of the Philadelphia Youth Orchestra, Jenny DeHuff, journalist, Lovett Hines from the Philadelphia Clef Club of Jazz, Rashawn Lucas, Afro-Tayuno Productions, Vance DeBeau, President of Rough House Records, David Ivory, Grammy-nominated engineer, Ghetto Reese, on behalf of Sonia McDuffie, Black Maverick Entertainment, Craig White, The Sound Doctor, Mr. Miggs, Headhunter Entertainment, Cindy Drew, 102.9 MGK, WMGK, Brent Porche, 93.3 WMMR, Marilyn Rodriguez, Auro C., Bryant Sanders, Photography, Alvin Clay, iRadio Philly, Sem Pierre, Forge Recordings, Andre Saunders and Will. And our winners, the J-Players, Problem Child, DJ Slick, Jada Fet, Microphone, Sabria, Justin Gonzalez, I Know Brasko, Peace in the City Grease, Camille, of course, Brian Cronin, That Mag. And might I say that our invocation was done by two-time Grammy Award winner, Carvin Higgins. All right.
Where's Chil Moody? My daughter knows him.
Oh, he should be, where is he? He should be up here someplace.
Chil Moody, how you doing? Oh.
Hey, how you doing? Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Ready, Councilman?
All right, thank you very much, Council President. So this was our-
Hold on a second, hold on. Folks, could we have a little quiet, please?
This was our fifth-
Thank you.
-annual PHL Live Center Stage, a free platform for musicians. Just upload your YouTube video at phllive.org, and we have Grammy Award winners, Grammy-nominated folks, top music industry, who will judge those videos, and then you get to perform the five finalists live at some of our best venues. Shout out to Trocadero, which is closing, that for five years has hosted our award show, and win $1,000, free studio recording time. But the most important thing is to have these excellent folks make a judgment, and with all their abilities, we have in front of us the 10 category winners and the People's Choice winners. And so with that, this is a resolution recognizing and honoring the 2018 winners of PHL Live Center Stage.
Whereas, PHL Live Center Stage is a music initiative established by Councilman David O. as Chairman of the Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative and Innovative Economy, and whereas PHL Live Center Stage provides local musicians with exciting opportunities to be discovered and promoted and to achieve success here in Philadelphia, and-
Whereas PHL Live Center Stage performances and award show are structured across 10 different music, 10 different genres of music, bringing diverse musicians together, the 10 different genres are rock, hip-hop, jazz, classical, gospel, country folk, world, pop, R&B, and DJ, in addition to the People's Choice Award, which is selected as the 11th category. And whereas, this year's finalists performed live in prominent local venues, World Cafe Live, Milk Boy, Hard Rock Cafe, Reformation Lutheran Church, the Clef Club of Jazz, Settlement Music School, Voltage Lounge, the Fillmore, Philadelphia, and Warm Daddies. And whereas, the final winners for each genre announced in December at the Trocadero Theater during the 5th Annual PHL Live Center Stage Award Show were decided by judges who are considered experts in the industry, and whereas, the People's Choice Award is voted on by the audience before and during the award show at the Trocadero Theater, and-
Whereas, the winning artists from each genre receive top prizes such as $1,000 cash, studio recording time, music videos, documentaries, and opening at major concerts. And whereas, the 2018 winner of the rock category is Peace and the City Grease. And whereas, the 2018 winner of the hip-hop category is I Know Brasko. And whereas, the 2018 winner of the jazz category is Whack Cheddar, and-
This is, I think, the most creative group we ever had around us up here. Whereas, the 2018 winner of the classical category is Justin Gonzalez. Whereas, the 2018 winner of the gospel category is Microphone. And whereas, the 2018 winner of the country folk category is the J-Players, and-
I want to personally salute Councilman O. for just lifting up and celebrating those gifted with song, and those of you who share it with us. And whereas, the 2018 winner of the song category is Jada Feet. And whereas, the 2018 winner of the pop category is Sabria. And whereas, the 2018 winner of the R&B category is Camille. And whereas, the 2018 winner of the DJ category is DJ Slick, and-
Whereas, the 2018 winner of the People's Choice category is Problem Child. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that hereby recognizes and honors the 2018 winners of PHL Live Center Stage, further resolve that an engrossed copy of the resolution be presented to David Ivory as evidence of the gratitude of this legislative body.
And the Chair recognizes Mr. Ivory for remarks.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone, and what a great morning it is for us.
I'm going to interrupt just to say, he did all the early albums of The Roots.
He's funny. I gotta say, the Councilman O. is one of the biggest cheerleaders of all of the music business here in Philadelphia, and I truly thank you for that. Obviously, thanks go out to Councilman O. and his incredible staff who work extremely hard to make this PHL Live event a success. To all the judges, the volunteers, and interns who show up to support this event, they do it for one reason and one reason only, to celebrate the great music being made right here in the city of Philadelphia. Can you believe it? This is five years, right? The dedication to providing a vehicle for emerging talent here in the city is crucial in protecting our great musical history. We all must support and bring awareness to everyone in how much of our homegrown music and artists contribute to our local economy, and how important it is as a community to provide an environment to support them. Speaking of supporting our music community, a recent PHL finalist in the R&B category, Julian King, has just moved to the next round of The Voice. Also, many of you may know, with Councilman O.'s leadership and city council's support, the Music Industry Task Force was formed more than a year ago to identify and come up with recommendations to help foster the development of the music business here in the city. Initiatives like having old and new Philadelphia music playing as you travel through the Philadelphia International Airport to parking relief for musicians loading in and out of venues, all contribute to the pride and respect we have for our music industry and for the work that's being done by the Music Industry Task Force. In the beginning, PHL Live represented an idea, an idea that we can do more as a community to showcase our talent. Now with so many venues closing, it has turned into a need. And as some of our finalists start rising through the music business ranks, we must provide the same opportunity for those about to come up. This is a great city, this is a great music town, and thanks to all of you, it will remain that way. Thank you.
Council, be at ease. Again, congratulations. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who presented resolution recognizing Amir Ford, Cassir Sadiq Patterson, Tahid Collins, Kashan Crawley, Zaher Perkins, Emmanuel Patterson, and Darrell Jones. With the young men and those accompanying them, please join the Councilwoman at the podium. And joining the Councilwoman, we have Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Brown, Councilwoman Bass, and Councilman Johnson, Councilman O., and Councilman Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are honored to make this presentation for young people who have done their part to try to help in the lives of others. We note that we have a mother and grandmother here for Tahid Collins, as he is no longer with us, and we are honored that they have come to be here to accept our presentation. The Council of the City of Philadelphia is pleased and proud to honor and recognize Kashan Crawley, Darrell Jones, Tahid Collins, Emmanuel Patterson, Zaher Perkins, Cassir Sadiq Patterson, Amir Ford, and Kashan Brown for their display of altruistic bravery in assisting one of their fellow residents, and-
Whereas, on Sunday, April 22nd, 2018, a two-car collision took place near 59th Street and Washington Avenue, leaving one car smoking and flipped onto its side, and having knocked out the traffic lights for that intersection, and-
A woman and her children were trapped inside a flipped-over vehicle, unable to remove themselves as the car continued to release smoke, and-
Whereas, Kayshon Crawley, Darrell Jones, Tahid Collins, Emmanuel Patterson, Zaher Perkins, Cassir Sadiq Patterson, Amir Ford, and Kashan Brown were playing basketball nearby and heard the woman cry, or heard the woman scream for help. They immediately rushed to the vehicle to assist in freeing the woman and her children. Despite the danger to their safety, they proceeded to break through the car windows and doors in order to liberate the woman and children from the wreckage, and-
Whereas, the quick-thinking and selfless actions of these young men led to the safe outcome of a potentially deadly situation. Neighbors who witnessed the act of heroism expressed pride in the boys, and-
Whereas, the actions of Kashan Crawley, Darrell Jones, Tahid Collins, Emmanuel Patterson, Zaher Perkins, Cassir Sadiq Patterson, Amir Ford, and Kashan Brown serve as a shining example of bravery, civic-mindedness, and the very definition of brotherly love.
So this is a bright moment, serving in this chamber, having the opportunity to honor these young people who are in the right place at the right time, and I just want to put on notice the Daily News and the Inquirer and Channel 10 and Channel 6 to make sure you cover the positivity that our young people are doing here in the city of Philadelphia. This is what it's really about. Therefore, by virtue of this citation, the Council of the City of Philadelphia wishes to thank and honor Kashan Crawley, Darrell Jones, Tahid Collins, Emmanuel Patterson, Zaher Perkins, Cassir Sadiq Patterson, Amir Ford, and Kashan Brown for acts of selflessness and heroism in the aid of those in need. We extend to them the respect and appreciation of this legislative body, and we all want to say congratulations.
And the Chair recognizes Michelle Collins. Michelle Collins for remark.
Um, how y'all doing? I don't really know what to say, but I just thank everybody for coming out, thank everybody for appreciating our bravery and what we did, and if I could do it again, I would. It's a lot of, it's a lot of bad stuff going on in my neighborhood, and to come out with something like this, it mean a lot, and I just, I don't know. Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Council, be at ease. Thank you, and again, congratulations for your, for your serious heroism. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like at this point to acknowledge a Pennsylvania state trooper who is with us, a former staffer of this very city council under Councilman Jack Kelly. His name is Matt Taubenberger, and I would like him to stand up and be recognized.
All right. Thank you, sir.
And he happens to be my son, and a very proud dad I am.
Thanks, Councilman. Thank you, and thank you for your service, sir. At this time, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, who presented resolution honoring Philadelphia's philanthropic women leaders in recognition of Women's History Month. With Tiffany Taveras and those accompanying her, please join the Councilwoman at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President. As is our custom, every March, we like to lift up women on the occasion of the celebration of Women's History Month. We have lifted up and celebrated women in the arts, women in tech, women in philanth- women in entrepreneurship, small business, and this year, after conferring with my staff, we thought it appropriate-
Whereas according to Giving USA's annual report on philanthropy for the year of 2017, charitable giving, for the first time ever, exceeded $400 billion in 2017, spurred by growth from individuals, foundations, giving by bequest, and corporations. In fact, giving by individuals in fiscal year 2017 increased by $14.27 billion. And
Whereas the Pennsylvania Foundation reported that Pennsylvania is home to 5,299 foundations with a giving amount of $1.1 billion in 2017. Accordingly, the Philadelphia area is home to 1,916 foundations with assets of $14.6 billion and a giving amount of $1.3 billion in 2015. And
Whereas philanthropy plays an important role in the development of good business. A 2017 survey by Robert Half Management Resources found that social responsibility is important for firms as they serve communities, improve employee morale, networking, reputation building, brand awareness, and recruiting and retention benefits. And
Whereas it is imperative that Philadelphia continue to lift up its philanthropic leaders and stand for those that stand on the forefront of social change while continuously developing creative and innovative solutions that positively transform our lives every day. Desmond Tutu said it best, "Do your little bit of good where you are. It is those little bits of good put all together that overwhelm the world." And whereas Reverend Dr. Lorena Marshall Blake is the president of Independence Blue Cross Foundation and vice president of Community Affairs at Independence Blue Cross. Reverend Marshall Blake was instrumental in helping to define IBC's foundation's mission of leading solutions for healthier communities in 2011. Under her leadership, the IBC Foundation has established itself as a philanthropic, local, powerful force and received the 2014 Corporate Foundation of the Year Award from the Association of Fundraising Professionals Greater Philadelphia Chapter. As an expert in philosophy, Ms. Marshall Blake has coined the phrase, quote, "We are meant to serve. We must reach back and give back," and I would say pull somebody up along the way. In addition to her corporate responsibility, Reverend Marshall Blake serves as an associate minister at the Vine Memorial Baptist Church. She exhibits a strong commitment to the community and is affiliated with over 30 professional and civic organizations. Reverend Marshall Blake is also an honorary fellow of the American Academy of Nursing and has been honored for her leadership and community service by a gazillion organizations such as the NAACP, Girl Scouts of Eastern Pennsylvania, who are here today, the Philadelphia Tribune, the League of Women Voters, Philadelphia Business Journal, Living Beyond Breast Cancer, and the United Way of Greater Philadelphia and Southern New Jersey. And
Whereas Charmaine Matlock Turner, aka The General, is the president and CEO of the Urban Affairs Coalition. She began her tenure in 1999 as the first woman to lead the coalition. Mrs. Matlock Turner and her team of more than 350 employees create partnerships and build consensus to help families reduce poverty and improve the quality of life in the region. Under Mrs. Matlock Turner's leadership, the Urban Affairs Coalition has successfully managed more than $1 billion in social capital invested in initiatives that include, but are not limited to, programs to end homelessness, HIV/AIDS education, quality pre-K, and a key consultant in improving contracting and employment opportunities for women and people of color in commercial construction. Mrs. Matlock Turner also serves on several boards, including Pierce College Board of Trustees, Children's Scholarship Fund Philadelphia, and Mayor Kinney's Workforce Development Steering Committee. In addition, Mrs. Matlock Turner has received numerous awards recognizing her hard work and commitment to families and communities. Over the years, she has been the recipient of the Citizen Volunteer of the Year Award from the United Way of Southern Pennsylvania and New Jersey, the Civic Investment Award from Community College of Philadelphia, the American Red Cross Clara Barton Award, and the Women in the NAACP Award. Charmaine Matlock Turner has dedicated her career and life to improving the quality of life for all Philadelphians. And Let me say about Evelyn Hildago, that I met her when I worked for Lucian the Solution Blackwell, and we had to, we needed help in University City with students from various places, and she did translations so that we could put them indoors and tell new students to pen. You just don't throw mattresses out the window when you come. These are the days. This is trash day. This is information. This is that information. She's always been involved with the community, always helped us with all of those various cultures, various students, and various community members who needed help. So whereas Evelyn Marcia Hildago, CEO of InterCultural Family Services, Inc., began her work with the agency in 1981. For over 35 years, her leadership has provided steadfast, the steadfast foundation for its continued success. InterCultural has evolved into a family-focused, multicultural, multipurpose organization that provides a variety of public health and human services to first-generation Americans and lifelong residents. Mrs. Hildago is her influence. She is a motivator, mentor, and champion for others. She is a community bridge builder while also very able at leading the day-to-day operations of the agencies, rolling up her sleeves alongside her team. She brings expertise in organizational development, agency operation, nonprofit fundraising, financial management, program development and design, and cultural competency training. Prior to joining InterCultural, Mrs. Hildago was a certified public accountant, CPA practitioner in the Philippines, where she had a successful career prior to migrating to Philadelphia, USA. She considers her greatest accomplishment to be building an organization that embodies its motto of diversity in action. InterCultural has a diverse multicultural staff of over 200 employees that can speak and translate over 15 languages and dialects. Mrs. Hildago earned a master's degree from the University of Pennsylvania and completed the Executive Management Training Program at the John F. Kennedy School of Government at Harvard University. And
Whereas Dahlia Wilson Scott serves as the senior vice president of Community Impact for the Comcast Corporation as president of the Comcast Foundation. Ms. Wilson Scott works collaboratively across Comcast NBC Universal to provide strategic leadership through all aspects of the company's community impact. Ms. Dahlia has been named one of the most influential blacks in corporate America by Savoy Magazine and an innovative rising star building communities by Forbes Magazine. She's also been a featured speaker at several forums highlighting impact and innovation in philanthropy. And
Whereas Danielle Wolf serves as the executive director of the M. Night Shyamalan Foundation. The M. Night Shyamalan Foundation supports grassroots efforts of emerging leaders as they work to eliminate the barriers created by poverty and social injustice in their communities. Ms. Wolf manages the foundation's portfolio of grants, building partnerships with emerging community leaders and like-minded organizations around the world. She consistently emphasizes the belief through the foundation's engagement that impactful change is driven by community leaders who have the fortitude, the character, and the cultural expertise to empower their communities to reach toward a bold vision for the future. Prior to joining the foundation, Ms. Wolf served High-Impact Philanthropy, where she provided guidance to funders engaged in domestic education and public health projects. She also worked as a project manager for City Year New York, designed academic and behavioral interventions for at-youth risk. And Danielle holds a Bachelor of Arts magna cum laude from Barnard College and holds a joint MPA and MSED with honors from the University of Pennsylvania's Fels Institute of Government and Graduate School of Education. And
Let me take a moment and thank our majority whip, Blondelle Reynolds-Brown, for making sure that celebrations like today are part of the operations here in council, particularly during Women's Month, and the ability for women to tell her story. Thank you, Blondelle. We appreciate it. The women in council will make sure we keep those traditions going. Thank you, thank you. Whereas Tiffany Tavares serves as vice president of Community Relations at Wells Fargo, where she implements the company's corporate responsibility objectives and priorities through strategic philanthropy, stakeholder engagement, team member volunteerism across the northeastern United States. Wells Fargo has donated $286.5 million to 1,4,500 nonprofits in 2017 alone in support of critical, socio-economic, and environmental challenges. Ms. Tavares' experience includes working in the university relations, philanthropy, and development for PICO, Comcast, Temple University, the Pew Center for the Arts and Heritage. She has been recognized by numerous organizations for her civic leadership, including the Philadelphia Business Journal, Leadership Philadelphia, Aldea News Media, Influencing Action, 2018 Emerging Leader Award from the Forum of Executive Women, and the National Youth Foundation. Ms. Tavares also serves on Governor Tom Wolf's Pennsylvania Commission for Women, Temple University's Contemporary Advisory Council, Philadelphia Global Identity Advisory Board, and the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Moral Arts Program. She is also a proud Dominican leader, being a founder of the Dominicans and the Delaware Valley. I'm proud to call her my friend. She is frequently featured as a guest speaker and panelist for events and conferences throughout northeast region, including Young Philadelphia Involved, the People Power Summit, Professional Women's Roundtable, and the Fearless Conference. Ms. Tavares also serves as a mentor to several young women that she considers to be the young future leaders of our region. And
Whereas Dominique Goss is an astute and progressive philanthropic leader in the Philadelphia metro area who became TD Bank's charitable relationship manager in 2016. She's responsible for aligning TD's corporate giving towards broader strategic priorities in partnership with local community managers. The TD charitable foundation's goal is to drive broader philanthropic impact that aligns with the bank's global corporate citizenship strategy, the Ready Commitment. Her passion and commitment to equity in underserved communities of human diversity is demonstrated in her portfolio of work. She has pioneered efforts in championing financial giving to organizations that promote sound fiscal responsibility and innovation in the nonprofit sector. Ms. Goss is a native Philadelphian that spent her freshman year at Howard University, H-U?
Yes, right.
Before transferring to Temple University, T-U?
T-U.
Where she received her bachelor's degree. In 2017, Ms. Goss was featured in generosity's 12 people of color, leading the social impact charge in Philadelphia. Most recently, she was honored as a minority business leader by the Philadelphia Business Journal and was elected to attend the Greater Philadelphia Economy League's 2018 Leadership Exchange in Seattle. She also serves as a think tank contributor for the Brandywine Health Foundation, Philadelphia YMCA Y Achievers Committee, and Clarifize Junior Board. She's also a member with Emerging Practitioners in Philanthropy and Association for Black Foundation Executives. And
I'm so honored to introduce a rising star in our city whose family has been such a dear part of my life for a long time, and proud to introduce Adorene Erasari, a program officer with the Philadelphia Foundation. Raised in Philadelphia, Ms. Erasari has 20 years of experience working in the Philadelphia nonprofit sector, including positions at the Kimmel Center for the Performing Arts, Youth United for Change, Congreso de Latino Unidos, and the Mazoni Center for LGBTQ Health and Wellbeing. Her experience includes organizational, community, and youth development, program management, community outreach and advocacy, strategic planning, coalition building, communications, and health education. As a program officer in the Philadelphia Foundation's Philanthropic Services Department, Ms. Erasari manages the Fund for Children, a fund established in partnership with the Philadelphia Phillies and Eagles sports teams to support young Philadelphians in reaching their full potential. Ms. Erasari also oversees the development and management of Youth Adelphia, TPF's Youth Grant Making Board. She also reviews proposals through other TPF grant-making streams, including discretionary grant-making programs awarded through competitive applications and the GSK Impact Grant for Philadelphia. Adorene is an extraordinary woman who holds an MSW through the School of Social Policy and Practice at the University of Pennsylvania, a bachelor's degree in global studies, and global studies in education through Global LIU, Long Island University, and now therefore be it
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby honor, recognize, celebrate, and lift up these Philadelphia's philanthropic, diverse group of women leaders in the recognition of Women's History Month. Further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to each one of these honorees for leading and being of what we need them to be, providing service to the least of these in our community. We salute you, the women leaders in recognition of Women's History Month, and the work you do every day on behalf of Philadelphia's philanthropic community. Congratulations.
Thank you, and the Chair recognizes Ms. Tavares and Ms. Lorena Marshall Blake.
Good afternoon.
It's not the afternoon yet.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I live in the future. There are memories that we create and go through that are mental and emotional injuries, injuries that cause you to feel broken. And if you are broken as an individual, then you are broken as a collective that sustains the impact of poverty. Youth United for Change, Congreso de Latino Unidos, and the Mazoni Center for LGBTQ Health and Wellbeing. Her experience includes organizational, community, and youth development, program management, community outreach and advocacy, strategic planning, coalition building, communications, and health education. As a program officer in the Philadelphia Foundation's Philanthropic Services Department, Ms. Erasari manages the Fund for Children, a fund established in partnership with the Philadelphia Phillies and Eagles sports teams to support young Philadelphians in reaching their full potential. Ms. Erasari also oversees the development and management of Youthadelphia, TPF's Youth Grant Making Board. She also reviews proposals through other TPF grant-making streams, including discretionary grant-making programs awarded through competitive applications and the GSK Impact Grant for Philadelphia. Adorene is an extraordinary woman who holds an MSW through the School of Social Policy and Practice at the University of Pennsylvania, a bachelor's degree in Global Studies, and Global Studies in Education through Global LIU, Long Island University, and now therefore be it...
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby honor, recognize, celebrate, and lift up these Philadelphia's philanthropic diverse group of women leaders in the recognition of Women's History Month. Further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to each one of these honorees for leading and being of what we need them to be, providing service to the least of these in our community. We salute you, the women leaders in recognition of Women's History Month, and the work you do every day on behalf of Philadelphia's philanthropic community. Congratulations.
Thank you. And the chair recognizes Ms. Tavares and Ms. Lorena Marshall Blake.
Good morning. I live in the future. There are memories that we create and go through that are mental and emotional injuries, injuries that cause you to feel broken. And if you are broken as an individual, then you are broken as a collective that sustains the impact of poverty, lack of access to good healthcare, safe neighborhoods, and low-quality education. Everyone up here with me right now chooses to not live silently with brokenness. That is why I am honored to speak on behalf of myself and my esteemed honorees, because I have personally been impacted by someone else's willingness to give. I wouldn't have been a Philadelphian or gotten into the field I did if it wasn't for those who wanted to give me the same opportunity that all of us try to provide for others. We know that philanthropy is not charity. It is not a handoff, nor is it the judgment of who is deserving of a path of betterment or of strength. It is knowing the difference between paying it forward as a way that you live versus a thing that you do. It is the revitalization and replenishment of the systems that allow us to invest millions of dollars into the city of Philadelphia every year, changing people one day, one experience, one meal, one book, one song at a time, with much of it going unseen, unheard, and sometimes underestimated. To President Clark and fellow outstanding city council members, especially Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown, and my friend and fellow leader at Wells Fargo, A.J. Jordan, I express, humbly express my gratitude to you, your staff, and all your constituencies for this recognition. Bless you all.
Yeah. Good morning. Again, I liked it. President... All right. First thing I want to do is salute all the women that are up here today and all the wonderful women in city council. And as Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown, I always have a book. Okay? So there is a wonderful poem, it's called, "Words Every Woman Should Remember." And because it's Women's History Month, I went to make sure that I did this. There are women, and this is to all the women of council and all women here, in addition to my fellow honorees. There are women who make things better simply by showing up. There are women who make things happen. There are women who make their way. There are women who make a difference. There are women who make us smile. There are women who do not make excuses and women who cannot be replaced. There are women of wit and wisdom who, through strength and courage, make it through. There are women who change the world every day, women like you. So again, I want to salute all of the women today. Again, I want to thank the councilwoman and council for this honor. And I had a quote, "If you're in the luckiest 1% of humanity, you owe it to the rest of humanity to think about the other 99%." And it's important that we always serve. It should not be an option. It should be something that we do. And as I stand here with my fellow colleagues, again, they represent the future. I'm getting ready to step off. I'm teasing. Okay. Not yet. We've still got a couple more years. But finally, telling everyone here today to go into the world and do well, but more importantly, don't go into the world and do good. Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you very much. Our next order of business is communications, and the chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4, 604, and 2307 of the Home Rule Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 190121, 190151, 190161, and 190181.
Mr. Decker, you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And our next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
I thank you very, very much, Mr. President. I offer two resolutions and will speak very briefly on one to recognize members of the Girl Scouts. Thank you.
A privilege resolution celebrating the city of Philadelphia's high-quality, affordable drinking water provided by the Philadelphia Water Department.
Today's calendar.
And a privilege resolution honoring the Girl Scout movement and Girl Scouts of eastern Pennsylvania for providing girls with a safe, inclusive space where they can hone their skills and develop leadership abilities, and declaring March 28, 2019 as Girl Scout Day in the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
I thank you, Mr. President. Delighted to present to some and introduce to others members of the Girl Scouts. First of all, we have board members here. We know that they matter because they give their time, talent, and treasury. So we want to recognize both Stephanie Costa and Bob Merkin of Comcast, who are actively engaged with the work at Girl Scouts. We also want to ask to stand Kim Freitz-Dow, CEO, Lori Frank C., Vice President of Development. And we're lucky enough to have some Girl Scouts and brownies here. Brianna Davis, Troop 91 and 11th grader. Tiana Ellis, Troop 91, 8th grade. Keeler Ross Duckett, Troop 9609. Aya Nelson, Troop 91, 9th grade. Connor is a kindergartner? Wow. Oh, my. Okay. That's normal. Vajdi Valentine, Troop 91, 6th grade, along with Mimi, Senior Manager of Volunteer Service, and board members Susan Macurioni, Victoria Lupica. We thank you every day for the work that you do on behalf of building girls to be strong women. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And that will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I introduce one bill and one resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing and approving certain additional projects designated by the City Director of Finance to be financed by the Philadelphia Municipal Authority with remaining proceeds of said authority's city service agreement revenue bonds. Series 2014 be tax-exempt, and authorizing and approving the undertaking by the city of all necessary steps to accomplish the intent and purpose of this ordinance.
Verge the committee.
And a privilege resolution hereby proclaiming April 21, 2019, Penn's Relay Carnival Day in honor of its 125th anniversary.
Today's calendar. And the chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I offer one resolution cosponsored by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown and signed by all members of council.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution proclaiming April 2, 2019, as Equal Pay Day in Philadelphia.
And that will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please, I'm addicted. Girl Scout cookies. One resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution condemning Pennsylvania State Representative Stephanie Borowitz's religious invocation on the day of the swearing-in of the first Muslim woman to ever serve in the General Assembly as Islamophobic and inappropriate.
Next week's calendar. Would you like to speak? Sure. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take a moment to talk about religious tolerance. William Pym, the founder of Pennsylvania, was an advocate for democracy, freedom of speech, freedom of religion, and found his way here because he himself faced religious persecution in England. But today, we face a lack of tolerance, a lack of acceptance, a lack of inclusion. And that lack of tolerance and acceptance starts all the way up in the White House, goes through our State House, and winds up in our individual homes and playgrounds. That top-down kind of lack of tolerance started in the White House, but the other day was exhibited in the State House. Where there should be brotherly love and sisterly affection, there was a visceral nature to a speech as Movida Johnson Harrell, the first Muslim woman sworn into the State House, was being sworn in. Now, I have a good relationship with all my colleagues, and whether I'm at Two Street in South Philly or in the hinterlands of the northeast, my colleagues make me feel welcome. They accept me as I am. I don't have to change who I am. And I want them to know if they come to my district, I'm not saying everybody will ever agree with them all the time on every topic, but they will never, ever feel unwelcome in my district or in an environment I happen to be in. That kind of tolerance to one another is taught, and it has a rippling effect. It is courtesy to allow people to express their ideas, be who they are, and then accept them where they are without making them feel less than. And so I would encourage our colleagues at the state level to be more civil. Maybe it'll trickle up to the White House and the, what is he, number, what, 45? Maybe he will catch on to that as well, and maybe it'll go global. But it starts with us. It extends to the State House, and we just can't sit by and let people just deliberately make people feel uncomfortable and unwelcome. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. That will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have one bill on your behalf.
Councilwoman Blackwell. Black, Councilwoman, did you wish to speak?
Movida Johnson is mine. So we wanted to agree and to thank you for your statement and your input on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Johnson, I'm sorry.
Introduce one bill on your behalf, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the transfer and appropriations for fiscal year 2020 from the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance provision for other grants, to the General Fund within an intent to support the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society's land care program through which the city-based landscape contractors and community organizations clean, green, and stabilize vacant lots, creating jobs for local residents and returning citizens, and the vacant lot stabilization activities of the city's Community Life Improvement Program, CLIP, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. That will be referred to committee. Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I have one bill and one non-privileged resolution on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance approving a substantial amendment to the Annual Action Plan 2018 through 2019 for $19,131,000 from the Housing Trust Fund Non-Recording Fee Sub-Fund.
Verge the committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the creation of a special committee on poverty reduction and prevention to hold hearings to propose and implement actionable policies and programs that substantively prevent and alleviate poverty in every Philadelphia neighborhood.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have two privileged resolutions.
A privilege resolution declaring April 7 to April 13, 2019, realtest week in the city of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution condemning the Trump administration's proposal to eliminate funding for the Special Olympics.
That will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes this Councilwoman, Ginn.
Good afternoon, Council President. I have one privileged resolution cosponsored by members Squilla, Dom, and Green.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And Councilman Tarbenberger.
Got it.
A privilege resolution honoring and commending South Philly Barbacoa's Christina Martinez and Royal Izayaki's Jesse Ito for their first-time nominations for James Beard Foundation Awards.
This week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Tarbenberger.
Good afternoon, Council President and colleagues. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two bills, one privilege, and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Kensington Avenue, Hilton Street, Jasper Street, and Madison Street.
Verge the committee.
And an ordinance continuing the East Passyunk Avenue Business Improvement District beyond its termination date in an area that generally includes both sides of East Passyunk Avenue from the south side of Federal Street to the east side of South Broad Street, certain blocks of streets that intersect that portion of East Passyunk Avenue, both sides of South Broad Street from the north side of McKean Street to the north side of Snyder Avenue, and the west side of South Broad Street from the south side of Mifflin Street to the north side of McKean Street, for which the East Passyunk Avenue Business Improvement District, a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, is the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district.
Verge the committee.
And a privilege resolution honoring and recognizing the San Kofa Freedom Academy Charter School Basketball Team for their hard work, determination, and success upon winning the 2019 Pennsylvania Inter-Scholastic Athletic Association, PI AA 1A, Boys Basketball State Championship.
Here we go again. This week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution initiating action to continue the East Passyunk Avenue Business Improvement District beyond its termination date in an area that generally includes both sides of East Passyunk Avenue from the south side of Federal Street to the east side of South Broad Street, certain blocks of streets that intersect that portion of East Passyunk Avenue, both sides of South Broad Street from the north side of McKean Street to the north side of Snyder Avenue.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions this week.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I offer three privileged resolutions cosponsored by Councilmembers Squilla, Heenan, Parker, Blackwell, Bass, and Green.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution honoring the life of firefighter Michael Bernstein, a dedicated servant to the city of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
And a privilege resolution recognizing and honoring John Sabaluskis for his extraordinary courage and heroism in rescuing a young woman from a dangerous robbery attempt.
This week's calendar.
And a privilege resolution recognizing and honoring Project Home on the occasion of its 30th anniversary.
Also this week's calendar. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. We have no reports from committee today, so our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. Being no bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the second reading and final... the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda for the following bills on the second reading and final passage calendars today. Bill numbers 1-80944, 1-80945, 1-80967, 1-81061, 1-81100, 1-81102, 1-90061, 1-90081, 1-90082, 1-90084, 1-90161, and 1-80938.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. The rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the bills just read by Councilman Heenan. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will consider the consent agenda shortly. Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the bills being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions of bills are being called up for the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are bill numbers 1-90214, 1-90215, 1-90216, 1-90217. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilmen. Before considering the bills and resolutions on our final passage calendars today, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you have signed up at the table to my left, if you have not, you may do so now. And when your name is called, you will go to the middle of the council chambers. There is a podium. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green on that device, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to speak. Thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
Patricia Libby. Commenting on 1-81063.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm here to speak about the liquefied gas plant in southwest Philadelphia. Some things I would like to remind, notify the City Council of, because they're going to be voting on this, I take it pretty soon. Easter is a wonderful time of giving, especially for children. They love the baskets. They love the things in the baskets. They want the candy. They want the marshmallow bunnies, all of that. With our natural gas plant, we're going to be giving some amazing gifts to the children in southwest Philadelphia as well as across Pennsylvania. We're going to be giving the gift of going to see Jesus up in heaven before they see their mothers' faces, because they're going to be stillborn. But they'll get to see Him before maybe we do. Secondly, things that we can put in their Easter baskets. We can add the masks for those who have asthma, so that they can easily find them and they need them. We can put in the skin creams for all those red rashes that they're going to have. I've heard them spoken about in Harrisburg, before the Harrisburg Building. We can put in the pain medications, all that Tylenol for their stomach aches so hard that they can't even go to school. We've heard about that happening, too. Of course, there's always the things maybe that are too big for the Easter baskets, the medications for cancer and the treatments, the various treatments they'll be receiving for that. And of course, for those with the neurological problems we're going to be creating, we can give them the special ed teachers that would be able to help them through their education. We're such wonderful donors to all of these children in our city and across our state and across our nation with what we're doing with gas and with fracking. I hope you all consider this, remember this, as you get the baskets together for your children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. Have a blessed Easter.
Thank you for your testimony.
Nicole Karsh. Commenting on 1-81063.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, I'm here to speak in opposition to Bill 1-81-
Just state your name for the record.
Oh, my name's Nicole Karsh. I'm here at the Sunrise Movement to speak in opposition to Bill 1-81063, but more than that, I'm here to speak in favor of a Green New Deal for Philadelphia. We have 11 years to radically mobilize every aspect of our society in alignment with what science and justice demand in order to avoid the climate crisis, a jobs crisis, and healthcare crisis. And we need solutions to do that. A Green New Deal would guarantee that we have 100% renewable energy infrastructure. It would guarantee that every person who wants a good, union-paying job would have one, and just one, and not three, to make rent. And it would guarantee that the people who have been at the front line of environmental racism in Philadelphia for generations would receive justice. The people living in southwest Philadelphia or in South Philadelphia with asthma rates because of the oil refinery, they don't deserve a new gas plant going up in their backyard. The energy contract for the LNG plant is a 25-year commitment to fossil fuels. We have 11 years to radically move our society away from fossil fuels, so it doesn't make sense to sign people up for jobs where for 14 years of it, we don't want to be burning fossil fuels. We don't want it to be economically feasible, so I, but I really wish that I wasn't even talking about this, because I only want to talk about solutions. But until that bill goes on hold, I fear for my future that I'm gonna take on a gas plant, I'm gonna take on the debt that we're gonna create by moving away from fossil fuels and then publicly owning a gas plant for another 15 years. So, that's why it's really important that we hold the bill on LNG. But really, talking about Green New Deal as a solution, the Sunrise Movement sent the Philadelphia Green New Deal draft to every member of council earlier this week. We sent a questionnaire that you can fill out so that we can endorse you and your candidacy. We're asking people in Philadelphia to step up and champion solutions or step aside, because we have a lot of people who are running for seats, who are willing to champion these solutions. And we, we're running out of time as young people, and so that is where I will leave you. I really hope that we can work together for these solutions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Abby Lidi. Commenting on 1-81063.
Good afternoon.
Hello, my name is Abigail Lidi. I'm 17 years old, and I'm a senior at Central High School. The proposed LNG plant is a liquefied natural gas plant, and I was taught in my public school that plants like it are good because they're not coal. The fact is that extracting natural gas and burning it in our community still releases massive amounts of greenhouse gases into our atmosphere. It also releases nitrous oxide, which causes asthma and other extremely dangerous respiratory diseases. I ask council what you all think will happen if we knowingly give our most vulnerable communities asthma, which young people are more likely to develop, and then send them into public schools that often do not have full-time nurses? When we release even more carbon and methane and climate-d destroying gases into the air, is it somehow okay because it's caused by natural gas and not coal or something worse? I'm here today because better than coal is not a metric we have the luxury to use anymore. We cannot say that poisoning our children and communities and releasing greenhouse gases that continue to create the climate crisis is okay because we could hypothetically be killing people faster. The fact is that young people in Philadelphia will spend much longer breathing this air than you will. The air you create now, the air you vote to contaminate or not, is the air we will have to breathe for the rest of our lives. The damage you will cause if you vote to approve the LNG gas plant is damage that will be felt most by the people too young to vote you in or out of office. The fact is that beyond just our air, the consequences of burning fossil fuels are the consequences we will live with for the rest of our lives. The fact is that every fossil fuel project, natural gas or otherwise, that this council approves will create dire, life-threatening, family- and community-destroying consequences that we will live with for the rest of our lives, that I will live with for the rest of my life. Plants like LNG don't just poison our air. They created and continue to create the climate crisis. Plants like LNG are the climate crisis. You can do something. You all have a choice. I know it's hard to see it, but the climate crisis, the floods, the droughts, the hurricanes, the fires, the poisoned air and water, the unlivable future, the destruction that will follow me, it starts with votes like this one. It starts with people saying it's easier to stick with small incremental change, that natural gas is probably okay, that it's just one small plant in one corner of one city, that it's cheaper, or that the lobbyists pushing for it are convincing and have deep pockets, with ignoring the science because it's convenient. It starts with legislators elected to serve the interests of the people, serving the interests of the fossil fuel industry instead, even if at the time it feels like a small concession. I want to be clear, the climate crisis starts with votes like this one. It starts with you.
Thank you.
Leslie Spina. Commenting on 1-70408.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Members of City Council. My name's Leslie Spina. I'm the Executive Director of Kinder Academy. We operate five highly-rated childcare centers in northeast Philadelphia. We've been a partner with the School District of Philadelphia for more than 10 years. We've been in the Keystone Stars Program Equality Initiative from the inception and have operated at the highest levels from the beginning. We serve a diverse population in the northeast. The one thing they have in common is economic instability. Typically, I would be here to talk to you about the importance of early childhood education, the impact of SED on the future of our city. Although that is near and dear to my heart, today I'm here to talk about student suspension and expulsion. At a time when we are seeing disproportionate numbers of brown and black children facing suspension and expulsion, especially boys, something must be done. Sadly, we see this trend in early care and education, too. Now's the time to do something. So, although I said I'm not here to discuss early care and education, that's only half true. In seeking out solutions to the suspension and expulsion escalation in our schools, there's one preventative measure that I can suggest. Research shows that there's a correlation between access to high-quality early childhood education programs and environments and later school success. Invest early and invest wisely. Expose children to an environment where expectations are high, hands-on learning opportunities abound, and becoming a productive part of the community is the expectation, laying the foundation for ongoing and continued success. This is what our children need, and this is what our community needs. We are so fortunate that our great city sees value in this, sees the value in our youngest citizens, our children. By enacting the sweetened beverage tax, this City Council took steps to ensure that our children enter school on a level playing field. Dollars from this tax fund a variety of programs that support children in communities, including early care and education through the development of Philly Pre-K, a preschool program for three- and four-year-old children in our city. The children that have been fortunate enough to access the so far limited numbers of spots available in this program have benefited from high-quality, hands-on experiences led by qualified teachers and classrooms with age-appropriate and developmentally-appropriate materials and activities. Again, research indicates that children that receive an early childhood experience that is high in quality with a developmentally-sound curriculum and aligned to appropriate milestones and expectations are set on a course, a trajectory of ongoing school success. The research shows that investing in high-quality early care and education returns seven to tenfold for every dollar we spend. We see gains in reduced grade retention, reduced juvenile crime and incarceration rates, reduced teen pregnancy, reduced special education placement, higher overall educational attainment, including increased school graduation rates.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Reggie Huck. Commenting on 1-70408.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Reggie Huck, and I'm an Administrative Director for TYL2 Preschool and Learning Central Preschool located in West Philadelphia in District 3, represented by Councilwoman Blackwell. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Blackwell for voting for the original sweetened beverage tax bill and not co-sponsoring the recently introduced Bill 1-90183 that could potentially eliminate the sweetened beverage tax. Both Learning Central Preschool and TYL2 are STAR4 Centers, and TYL2 currently partners with Philly Pre-K with 60 slots to provide high-quality early learning opportunities for the community. High-quality centers like ours are an important component to reducing suspension expulsion of elementary-age students, and Philly Pre-K is essential to our ability to give children and families the services they need. With Philly Pre-K, people do not have to look outside of their community for opportunities to properly educate and prepare their children for life outside the home. Literacy and academics are important, but much more goes on at our centers. Firstly, we are a safe space. We protect children. We are there to ensure no child is being abused or neglected. We are all mandated child abuse reporters. We provide nutritious meals for children who are hungry. This has a direct impact on their cognitive development, their ability to focus, listen, and be happy children. We can recruit and afford you pay people who are educators and not babysitters, people with degrees that pair academic knowledge with love for children to partner with parents in their child's development. In high-quality centers like ours, children practice socializing in safe spaces. They practice what behaviors are acceptable and what behaviors cause conflict. Teachers help them to engage with their peers and adults in the program. The kids work independently. They learn self-control, self-discipline, and gain self-awareness. Parents are also introduced to how children function outside of the home and how to engage in communicating with teachers about challenging personal issues and concerns or the expectations and dreams they have for their children in an appropriate manner. Philly Pre-K allows us to be a hub for the community and to help children develop socially and emotionally within their community. Early support, identification, and intervention are the keys to preventing many social and emotional issues that children might experience in grade school. Thank you.
Lynda Mackey. Commenting on 1-70408.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Lynda Mackey, and I'm here to support the Philadelphia- I'm here to support the Philadelphia Service Tax for the funding of the Pre-K program. I strongly believe it is a benefit for the young children and help them gain the fundamental skills they need to prepare them for higher learning. I am a grandmother of twin boys that have been attending the preschool program for two years at TYL2. They are reading, writing, and have basic math skills. It is also helping them with their social skills as they enjoy interacting with other children. The teachers and staff are very nurturing, and students are keeping them focused and interested in learning. This is an excellent program and good for all children to have the opportunity for early education, to prepare them for kindergarten, and help them learn and grow in a healthy way. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Laverne Cheesebro. Laverne Cheesebro.
Next.
George Gould. Commenting on 1-80938.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, my name is George Gould. I'm a senior attorney at Community Legal Services. 1-80938 is a package of bills that have been introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown dealing with the serious issue of childhood-led poisoning. Two of these bills have already been passed, and this bill, what it would do is require that in pre-1978, city-owned or occupied properties- that in pre-1978, city-owned or occupied properties or the involvement of expenditures in properties of primarily city funds, a lead-safe certification would be required. I have to say that Councilwoman Reynolds Brown and her staffer, Julianne Thompson, have been real champions, true champions, of prevention of childhood lead poisoning. The requirement of a lead-safe certification before occupancy after the renovations in these properties would be basically a visual inspected by a certified lead inspector and also doing dust wipes in accordance with EPA standards to determine whether or not hazardous dust still remains in the property. This bill, like the other bills and two that are coming up, are critical, and I strongly hope that members of this City Council support these bills. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Joe Danahell.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Feel a lot better if I got a check. This is an official decree of the people and red man damage court warrant, all as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council, mayor, governor, and others transfer private property of government, probably illegally. Are ABC News and mainstream media refusing to report this? Is HUD, low-income housing money, being used to build a mall on top of my stolen home? Last week, council honored yet another six ABC employee. Was the ceremony attended by Disney ABC management. Beware of the source is a reporter of facts maxim. Would a reporter of facts be happy to receive an award that would make Joseph Goebbels proud? Has mainstream media refused to keep the people informed? Is mainstream media receiving quid pro quo awards for doing so? Should Disney, CBS, NBC, and others be required by the people to report facts or be denied access to public airwaves? Jefferson stated, "If we are to remain free, it is the responsibility of every American to be informed." The U.S. Attorney General McSwain correctly identified that failure to perform a known duty or task is illegal and causes great harm. Military people know this act is treason. The Constitution's require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. 42 U.S.C. 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987, 18 U.S.C. 241, 242, 2381, 2384, P.A. Constitution, Articles 1, Section 1 through 28, 26 P.A., C.S.A. 703, 705, 708, 709, 711, 712, 713, 716, 902, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056 appear violated. I call on the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue. The denial of God-given 42 U.S.C. 1982 property rights for 25 years is egregious, extraordinary oath violating and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color law government must have its trial revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse or sworn to do that any more than a fireman can refuse to play fire. The sovereign people require oath law and Constitution be enforced, and jail is required for all who violate oath, Constitution, or law. I remind council, it takes law cooperation to create and allow all of this monumental corruption.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez.
Thank you. I need a motion to suspend the rules to allow me to present a resolution given to me. It's a non-privileged resolution. Emotion.
I give a second. It's been moved a proper second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Councilwoman.
Thank you. I introduce the resolution, a non-privileged resolution.
Thank you.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2511 North Orkney Street located in the 7th Councilman District in accordance with terms of Chapter 16700 of the Philadelphia Code.
Thank you. That will be on next week's calendar. We will now consider today's consent agenda. I would ask Mr. Decker, please read the titles of all of the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda. Upon sub十个 objection and without debate, the bill will be immediately removed from consent agenda and placed on our regular second reading and final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda.
Bill number 180944 entitled in ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Tenny Street, West Side, Brown Street to Aspen Street. And bill number 180945 entitled in ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Marborough Street, West Side, Wally Street to Richmond Street. And bill number 180967 entitled in ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Brown Street and Broad Street, Russell Street and Germantown Avenue, Rush Street and Park Avenue. And bill number 181061 entitled in ordinance submitting Section 9205 of the Philadelphia Code entitled sidewalk sales by prohibiting vending on both sides of 56th Street between Havreford Avenue and Vine Street, 57th Street between Havreford Avenue and Vine Street, and Vine Street between 56th Street and 57th Street. And bill number 181100 entitled in ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Park Avenue, both sides, Dolphin Street to Susquehanna Avenue. And bill number 181102 entitled in ordinance establishing a no motorhome parking regulation on the 5300 block of Woodbiden Avenue, both sides. And bill number 190061 entitled in ordinance authorizing Timothy Lidiac doing business as the thirsty soul to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk cafe at 1551 West Passion Avenue. And bill number 190081 entitled in ordinance establishing a one-way regulation on Cecilby Moore Avenue from Front Street to Sixth Street, westbound. And bill number 190082 entitled in ordinance establishing a one-way regulation on Montgomery Avenue from Second Street to Front Street, eastbound. And bill number 190084 entitled in ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Marvine Street and Champlin Street, North 12th Street and Chue Avenue, Kamak Street and Chue Avenue, North 12th Street and Champlin Street, North 9th Street and Ruscombe Street, North Marvine Street and Champlin Street Avenue. And bill number 190161 entitled in ordinance authorizing Michael Myers doing business as Fill It Up Again to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk cafe at 436 East Girard Avenue. And bill number 180938 entitled in ordinance submitting Title 16 of the Philadelphia Code entitled public property by adding a new section requiring that certain renovation projects involving city-owned or occupied buildings where the use of city capital dollars be certified as lead-free or lead-safe prior to the completion of the renovation project.
That's it? These bills haven't been read on two different days. The question for each bill now is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker shall call a roll. Upon being called, each council member shall vote aye. Aye on each of the bills, or nay on the bills that they indicated that they are not supporting, and those bills will--all right, let's start over. Each of the bills, nay on each of the bills or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye, and those bills for which the member is voting nay. Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye on all--
Councilwoman Blackwell.
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Dom.
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Green.
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Greenlee.
Aye on all bills.
And Councilwoman Gim.
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye on all bills.
And Councilman Johnson.
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Jones.
Aye on all bills.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye on all bills.
Councilman O.
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Guna N. Sanchez.
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Taubenberger.
Aye on all bills.
Council President Clark.
Aye on all bills. The majority of all members having voted in, affirm that for each of the bills, the bills on the consent agenda are passed. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, if you can read the title of 190214.
A resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to support Restore Pennsylvania, Governor Tom Wolf's $4.5 billion infrastructure improvement plan.
And Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved a proper second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 190214 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 190215.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration D's conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city-owned lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the 32nd Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved a proper second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 190215 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 190216.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration D's conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city-owned lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the 32nd Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. 190216 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 190217.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2937 North 8th Street located in the 5th Councilman district.
One last time. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
One more time, yeah. Move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. 190217 is adopted. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution celebrating the City of Philadelphia's high-quality, affordable drinking water provided by the Philadelphia Water Department introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the Girl Scout movement and Girl Scouts of Eastern Pennsylvania for providing girls with a safe, inclusive space where they can hone their skills and develop leadership abilities, and declaring March 28, 2019 as Girl Scout Day in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. We want to thank them for their deliciously fattening cookies. I move for the adoption.
Thank you. You know, it's actually not fair. I can't eat cookies while I'm standing up here. See you guys out there munching, man. It's killing me, right? I'm sorry. Resolution is adopted. We call for the vote? A second? We good? All right, okay. Mr. Decker, go ahead. Yeah. The motion, the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution hereby proclaiming April 21, 2019, Pen Relay Carnival Day in honor of its 125th anniversary, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption. Second.
It's been moved a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution proclaiming April 2, 2019, as Equal Pay Day in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Greenlee.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution declaring April 7 to April 13, 2019, Realtest Week in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and commending South Philly's Barbacoas, South Philly Barbacoas, Christina Martinez, and Royal Izakayas, Jesse Ito, for their first-time nominations for James Beard Foundation Awards, introduced by Councilwoman Gim.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing the Sancofa Freedom Academy Charter School Basketball Team for their hard work, determination, and success upon winning the 2019 Pennsylvania Interscholastic Athletic Association PIAA 1A Boys Basketball State Championship, introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved a proper second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the life of firefighter Michael Bernstein, a dedicated servant to the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. Move for adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring John Savaluskas for his extraordinary courage and heroism in rescuing a young woman from a dangerous robbery attempt, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. Move for the option of the resolution.
It's been moved a proper second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Project Home on the occasion of its 30th anniversary, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you again. I move for the option of the resolution.
It's been moved a proper second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Any speeches on behalf of the minority? Speeches on the half of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you very much, Council President. So Glen Mill School, after 193 years of being in business, is formally shut down. At its peak, it housed about 1,000 young men and boys. It spoke at the time to the mass institutionalization and incarceration of young men in the criminal justice system and the juvenile justice system. It had a culture of intimidation, aggression, and abuse, and it promoted these under the belief that somehow it would be okay if the boys didn't talk about it, if they hid behind the glamorous grounds of their facility, if they could show off star sports and behind beefed-up staff members. Those things came to light in a shocking video last June that showed a young man being beaten multiple times by staff members that finally started a criminal investigation. But it took a couple of us in this body to stand up and demand that DHS and our city agencies would not reopen intake to that building and to that facility until we were sure that those boys could be safe. And then in February, there was this horrifying expose by the Philadelphia Inquirer and a Pulitzer Prize-winning reporter, who we're grateful, is here in this city named Lisa Gardner, who exposed how serious the abuse was, how long it had been going on, how traumatic it was to young people. And the fact of the matter was, was that this wasn't just about whispers and rumors anymore. This wasn't just about stories that were told, but that it was real crime, a conspiracy to intimidate and harass, a cover-up that was happening at the highest levels. And with $100 million of city money at stake that goes from DHS into residential treatment facilities, we had a call to action. I think the thing that was really hard through this whole process was we demanded that our boys be pulled out immediately, and thank God they were. Because when the state came in and published their report two days ago and ordered an emergency removal of those boys based on the belief that their very lives were actually in danger, those things all happened between the date that the Inquirer posted its investigation in February until the state actually declared an emergency removal order. That included a young man who had his jaw broken in an assault by two staff members, was told to put his broken bones on ice, not sent to a medical facility, and was sent to the nurse the next day. That included individuals who were punched in the face, punched in the chest, young men who were intimidated, harassed, told to sign papers. This was more than just something that was done by a group of rogue agents. This is a problem that is happening in residential treatment facilities all across the United States. We are implicated and complicit when we do not take action. They do not have appropriate oversight, and we are doing wrong by young people. So I want to, you know, thank my colleague on this, the person I would call and text in an emergency and panic about what was happening so that he could like talk to me through some of this stuff. I want to thank Kenyatta Johnson for being an extraordinary partner in this. I want to thank all the members of this body who allowed the Committee on Children and Youth to move forward on a full task force last June, even when it was not quite certain about what we had to do, but you heard the call that action had to be taken. We are reducing the number of young people. We have raised the attention of the courts. It has gone all the way up to this state. But it started in this body, with the people around this room, who took the time to listen to the stories of young people in April of 2018, whose stories were so often overlooked, whose stories were neglected and not heard, but this body heard them. Change has happened. Justice will always be a-- I'm angry that it took us this long to have something move on, on stuff that we knew was going on for a really long time. But justice will come for some. Peace and resolution will take a long time coming, but, but this body is on the right path. I'm grateful to every single person who stood up in a moment of extreme injustice and, you know, the fact that a municipal city body helped lead this charge really means the world to me and should emphasize even more how important our work is to calling people to accountability and seeking justice when it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair, recognize Councilman Green.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. I want to remind my colleagues that we will be having a briefing after council today with the Barrister Association of Philadelphia. I'm a proud member of the Barrister Association. I haven't been an attorney for over twenty years, and the Barrister Association was established in nineteen fifty and represents professional needs and development needs to black lawyers in the City of Philadelphia and is part of the National Bar Association and has approximately a thousand lawyers and jurists in the region who are members of the Barrister Association. So I hope my colleagues will join me in this briefing on how we can partner in the future regarding a number of issues that are important for justice in the City of Philadelphia and where the barristers can play a role to help your staff and help members of this body and the city as a whole. One other thing I wanted to raise, excuse me, raise was the resolution I introduced today. Introduced a resolution condemning the Trump administration on their decision to zero-out funding to Special Olympics. This is something that is, I couldn't even, can't begin to form the words to articulate my anger and the just ridiculousness of this type of concept. Councilman Blackwell introduced a resolution regarding the Penn Relays Carnival. On that same day, Special Olympics, Pennsylvania will have their spring games here in the City of Philadelphia, something that I've attended over the years, and the audacity that the Education Secretary of the federal government, Betsy DeVos, was only in that position because she is married to Dick DeVos, who is the CEO of Amway. She has no qualifications to be the Education Secretary. When she was going through her confirmation hearings, myself and other, some members of this body protested outside of Senator Toomey's office during the Tuesdays with Toomey movement because she was not qualified to be Education Secretary. And she demonstrated her lack of qualifications when during her Senate confirmation hearing when various members of Congress asked her about the IDEA Act. She had no idea what that meant. And the IDEA Act is an legislation that basically enables to make sure that people with disabilities, especially young people with disabilities, get access to public education. She had no clue what that legislation meant, yet she wanted to be the Education Secretary. October twenty seventeen, she took away seventy-two regulations that help to protect students with disabilities and took those out of the things that she does as Education Secretary. And then with this proposed budget where President Trump in March the twenty-fifth of this year proposed a four-point-seven-two-trillion-dollar budget, they zeroed out funding for Special Olympics. Her statement was she was taken out of context. There are a lot of great organizations, and that the news media, I think she even used the phrase fake news, was incorrect. But budgets demonstrate where people's responsibilities are, what their desires and what they want to do and what they value. And the fact that we zeroed out Special Olympics is, is just unbelievable. The fact that this administration has spent forty-five million dollars alone just in travel from Washington, D.C. to Mar-a-Lago and Bedminster, and that you would not spend seventeen million dollars out of a four-point-seven-two-trillion-dollar budget on Special Olympics for the least of us in this country. It's something I just could not believe as an elected official that we would have this type of perspective in the White House. Where are the John McKane's of the world? I'm glad that at least two Republican senators, both Senator Blunt and Congressman Cole, said this would not pass, and I'm hoping other members of the President's administration, well, I'm sorry, the President's party step up in Congress to make sure this does not happen. But it just truly demonstrates the nature and the mentality we have currently in our federal government. And we'll be voting on this resolution next Thursday, which coincidentally, as we go into April next month, is Autism Awareness Month. And the fact that we even have to have a conversation about zeroing out dollars for young people who do not have lobbyists like people for Boeing and other large corporations, even lobby for funding is just unbelievable. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. I concur. Chair, recognize it is Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Yes, Mr. President. To Councilman Derek Green, I would say that's the truth. Mayor Street often said that society will be judged on how we treat our children. Therein lies the truth. To Councilwoman Gimm and Councilman Kenyatta, thank you for being strong, active, engaged, listening voices for those young people at Glen Mills. As a former residential counselor at a facility for adjudicated delinquent girls, that was the sister school to Glen Mills, it's regretful that thirty years later they had to have their license taken away from them for the right reasons. On another topic, there are sixteen ZIP codes in Philadelphia covering nine out of ten Councilmatic districts where more than ten percent of our children still get screened with elevated lead levels. In that, with that back text, I want to thank my colleagues for your vote on bill number one eight zero nine three eight. One criticism we received in the gazillion meetings that I've had with both the administration and others who care about this issue is that government was not doing enough. What, where's government's responsibility when it comes to buildings that are infected with lead? And so this bill today will, will require that city buildings which undergo a major renovation now also must be certified as lead-free and lead-safe. My office has traveled to Baltimore, Maryland to see how they do it. We've sat down with folks from Rochester, and we attended a national conference on lead a couple of weeks ago, all in an effort to figure out how we can do better with regards to children being poisoned by lead. We are looking for a win-win scenario, not a win-lose scenario, so our discussions will continue with the landlord community advocates in the administration as we seek to do better with regards to children being poisoned by lead. Lastly, if I could have a gig where I could do arts and culture nine days a week, I'd be a happy soul. In that spirit, I want to lift up Councilman O. for your Philly Live center stage. It is a rich, diverse mix of genres and all aspects of music, so I salute you, Councilman O., for just putting Philadelphia on center stage when it comes to the rich talent we have here in our city. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair, recognize Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I'd be remiss if I didn't bring this up at this time, and that is that we're three weeks away from the EITC filing, and there's only two more council sessions after this, and I just want to repeat some numbers for those that are listening. We have four hundred thousand people in this city in poverty. Two hundred and twenty-eight thousand qualify for the earned income tax credit. Forty thousand do not apply. We continue to leave a hundred million dollars in Washington, D.C. And to give you some examples, if you have no children under the age of seventeen, the maximum credit is five hundred and six dollars, but you can file back three additional years, so you're talking about just over two thousand dollars. If you're a single parent and you have two children under the age of seventeen and your income's forty-four thousand or less, or you're a couple, two children under the age of seventeen, your income's fifty-one thousand or less, you can get checks from the federal government of up to fifty-seven hundred dollars, and you can file back for, three additional years for a total of twenty-three thousand dollars. It's a lot of money. The Revenue Department does a good job in helping us. United Way does a great job. Campaign for Working Families does a great job also. They'll fill out the returns for free. So I just want to mention it because we're two weeks away, Council President, and I think it bothers all of us that we leave this money on the table when ten percent of our people in poverty could get these checks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair, recognize Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to bring to the attention a very serious issue that we're facing, not only as a city but also as a nation on two fronts. One is the issue of youth gun volunteering in the City of Philadelphia. On the day I'll be out in my community, talking to residents and consoling some family members regarding the double homicide that took place in the Point Brears community, and so we must stay diligent in making sure that, one, we get the guns off the street, two, provide alternatives for our young people to get involved in things that are positive as opposed to picking up guns. But also, there was a report in the Philadelphia Daily News some time ago this month that talked about the life expectancy of African-American young men. There are a variety of different issues such as getting gun violence, health, and other negative side effects of living in low-income environments that have a significant impact on the life expectancy of African-American young men. And so being a father of two boys that I'm raising here in the City of Philadelphia, it's a critical concern of mine that they grow up in an environment where they can grow and thrive similar to their dad, and I have that same urgency for others' people, children. And so we must stay laser-like focused on, one, getting the guns off the street and making sure that we're aggressively pushing forward a strategy to reduce gun violence here in the City of Philadelphia, and also making sure we're paying a close eye on addressing the issue of life expectancy of African-American young men. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. There being no additional speeches, Chair, recognize Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move this council standard adjourn until Thursday, April fourth, two thousand and nineteen at ten a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second, the council standard adjourn until Thursday, April fourth, two thousand and nineteen, ten a.m. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you all very much.